Counselor Edmonds, what is your opinion?
Heavenly Father, we're thankful that opportunity to react to this town council. We're thankful for the blessings of the gospel in our lives. We ask that we meet this night, we might have died spirit guide and join us in the things you're saying to us. May I ask how may I am my son Jesus Christ.
Amen.
All right. Thank you for being all here. And today we're going to have a regular town council meeting on this 27th day of June. Time is flying by, so.
Well, it's downhill now with the cursors.
I was thinking of footballing, so.
Thank you.
My calendar ends at the election.
We want to recognize Cora Macalusi for Channel 32. And we want to recognize our delegation, Jim Schaefer. John, I say that every time, and yet I know perfectly you are John.
John, federal candidate.
And his lovely wife.
Much younger than you.
There you go, oh, I'm sorry. Gee, I was truly insulting you. His lovely wife, they will be there to speak with us once we adopt the agenda. All right, so we are calling the meeting to order, and we have additions to the agenda. I understand we have two possible additions. Counselor, please.
I want to add to the agenda to have John Schaefer's delegation to discuss some new information on the 11th Street potential construction.
John, cut him?
Right there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I was thinking of Jim.
Now I'm all confused. Lose the good okay now?
All right, so that's from new information to add to what we already know. There is also Counselor Creed who wants to add something.
Actually, we'll just do that under committee report. So I'll go verbal report because I didn't get a.
Oh, committee room? Okay, thank you.
I'll go on to add my police report as well, if I did committee on that.
Okay, I'm writing that down, thank you. Counselor Van Bree?
Discussion under committee reports, please.
Okay, and regarding which committee.
Mount Trail.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. All right. Anything else, Counselor? Okay, so.
I'll just under committee report, let's have a verbal comment to make there, John.
A dog.
Under CS versus CS.
All right.
I'm going to accept the agenda as.
And what you did.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. So having done that, we will ask John to come and give us a bit more information about the development of 11th Street on the west side of Temple.
As I was kind of thinking about the meeting, I decided I could go up and talk with Counselor Warrens today. And he just had mentioned one thing, as I was talking to him, maybe one of the reasons the town haven't gone forward with something would be because there's no grants and things available nowadays. And I know you don't want to hear what we've already talked about. You all know the proposal I have made to you in the past here. I asked Jeff here first of the week to find out what the services cost for Cody Toons property from 10th Street back to his house. And he looked that up for me, costing $11,250. And he originally had said it went 140 feet, but it really went approximately 225 feet back there, which.
So it was from Toon to 10th?
Pardon me?
The new property.
From Toons new house back to 10th.
To 10th.
Okay, which is about 225 feet.
Okay.
That is a cost of about $50 a foot for the utilities.
Okay, so that is utilities and just a dirt road.
Pardon me?
No road.
No road.
No road.
Now, my fault on this was, I'd be happy to pay $50 a foot to get the utilities from where they ended off to the other side of my property where Toons is. And I'll pay for the upgrade from the four inch to an eight inch and a bigger water line. And then also I would put the road in at my cost. That would be the same as what the town did for Cody on his property.
Okay, so let me be clear. It would be from your land.
It's from where we ended off, where Schaefer Investments ended off up there.
On Third Avenue.
On Third Avenue.
And you would go.
To the south end of my property, which would be the border of George Toon.
Yes.
Which connects to the current road at 3rd?
It would.
Or at 10th.
It would.
It was at 11th.
Okay, so that would be approximately 585 feet. Toons was about 225 feet. So his was just a little under half of mine. But I would be happy to go ahead and pay the same price as what he paid. Now, the only problem that I, I don't know if it's a problem, but the only thing I see different between the offer that I originally gave the town and this one right here is, if I did it the way Toons did it, or the town did it for Toons, then I would own the utilities and I would own the road. So then if anybody ever hooked onto it, then they would be, I suppose we'd have a development agreement in place to where they would be able to pay me something. If we went, the first proposal that I gave you, which was, you know what it is, the town would own the utilities and the road. To me, that's fair. I mean, either one of them is fair to me. I think the town, like I said, I've been back and forth to town many times, and somewhere along there, I've heard somebody say that they didn't want to set a precedence. To me, the precedence has already been set by what the town did for Cody.
Well, we have conflicting precedents all over the place. Problem, so, yeah.
But I mean, this was just within, since he built.
All right. John, I think there's a question.
Yeah, when you say utilities for Cody Toon, what does that include? Is that just a water line?
Water and sewer, and they dug it in.
So he's got a sewer line that runs all the way back to 10th Street and the water? So it's just sewer and water?
Sewer and water.
Okay.
No electric.
But you see, there's no difference in cost. The town could go in and dig sewer and water for mine, wouldn't be any difference in cost to dig. Then, you know, it doesn't cost more because I'm putting a bigger pipe. They still have to dig, backfill it. So there's no difference in cost.
Other than the pipe?
Other than the pipe. And I said I would, I'd pay the difference between the four inch and the larger water line.
Okay, so that is definitely new information. Thank you. And that is worth thinking about. Right now, we can't.
And the only other thing that I could say.
We've got to understand what it is about.
In talking with Dennis, and he was saying maybe the reason that they couldn't go ahead, or he wouldn't, the town isn't necessarily thinking about going ahead, would have been the cost. But either proposal, or at least with the proposal, the first proposal I gave to town, I was paying for all the hard costs. And I think that's where the town, I can say administration of the town and I differ. Because I think the costs are a lot less than what they're telling me the costs are. And the town putting Cody's in proves that. Because he gets charged $11,250 for 225 feet. So either that was the cost, or the town subsidized it. So.
Interesting comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And we have one more question here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding kind of your proposal. So what you're saying is, since yours is about a little more than twice as long as his, you're anticipating that the cost would be slightly more than twice the $11,000. So you're thinking like maybe $25,000?
If you figure it out on $50 a foot, it's $29,250.
Twenty-nine. So what you're saying is, you're saying, hey, for 29 whatever, 30 whatever, 30 grand gets the utilities in, and then you're going to do the road?
Then I would do the road.
And you're proposing with this, having paid the 30 grand, you own the utilities, do you also own this road?
Yes, because I'm paying for it.
You're owning the road. And anybody that wants to use it now has to pay to you.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody that decides to hook up after, or wants to use the road.
Okay.
And let me refresh the memory of what was said at one time. Once 11th Street goes in, Cody Toon then has to come around and use 11th Street.
Well.
Because his road is on a.
Yeah, municipal area.
Yeah, municipal area.
So I'm just looking at, so some of this land though, that was carved out for this, for this road, was pitched in by several landowners.
I forgot to give this, Dennis asked for this today. Actually, I want to run one off. That's the agreement between all the landowners.
Right, when they agreed.
To give up the 11th Street.
Right, but I'm just thinking, so my only question is, how do, how do we as a council answer to them who donated land for this road and now say, hey, we gave the road to John because he paid to build it? Even though technically it's on land that they have to cede to us, right?
You know, this has been an ongoing problem.
It is, I agree.
You know, and that's why I've always said the town should actually do it.
Sure.
I remember.
You know, it was a little bit different when we developed our five lots, because we gave up all the land.
Right.
Now Sanderson has given up all of the land on his property for the full 60 feet. It only gets divided when we come to Don Williams. And he's agreed in that agreement to give up 30 feet, and I've agreed to give up 30 feet.
How old is this agreement, John?
That one there? That's just recent, well, when I say recent, since we did our five lot development there. Subdivided for five lot.
Oh.
So it's just recent. Matthews is the one who drew it up, so I'll mention.
All right, so that's another piece of information. Thank you. Counselor Van Bree?
John, maybe I don't understand this right, but any subdivision is done by, regardless of who it is, once it's done, the town takes ownership of that, so they can maintain it to town standards, do all the grading and everything like that. So you embody it.
Pardon me?
You embody it.
Well, that's where this endeavor to assist comes in. Because.
That's different than ownership though, right?
Right. You guys, the town still own, but if somebody decides to hook up to it, then I would get some, be compensated some for them hooking up to it or having the use of the road.
All right, so last time that you worked here in the meeting, we had all come and talked about that endeavor to assist. And I asked quite a few questions, because I needed to know, can it be post retroactive, whichever way you want to call it, in order to be able to create such a document? And it appeared to be that there is no set rule regarding that. It was possible either way.
Right.
So that's what I took out of that meeting. Is that what you took out of that meeting?
Well, I think an endeavor to assist can be added on after, or it maybe should have been before, but it can.
In general, it's before, but in that case, it appears that there is no set rules. Best practice, let's say it's before, but.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Yeah.
That there's a set rule. But one thing I will say though, if you took the first proposal that I presented to the town, there isn't any endeavor to assist on either one, Schaefer Investments or the one that would be coming in front of my court.
Okay.
So that kind of goes away. In my opinion, it fixes the problems that a swift endeavor to assist.
All right. Jeff, want to.
Just because you're here, and I'm thinking now, I've never talked to Gary about his land. Is he, is his intent that the 60 feet would just go to 3rd, or would it continue north of 3rd? Do you know what his thoughts are around that? Like if this eventually got to 2nd?
No.
Where's Gary at with that, do you think?
Say that again.
So if 11th eventually got all the way to 2nd Avenue?
Right.
Gary's on the west side until Westons. Would he be, is he agreeable?
He's agreed to take the whole strip.
All the way until you hit Westons? Yeah, I just wanted to sure if it was his intent on 3rd or.
How many feet is that? How many feet is that?
I have to pull up the G.
It's a whole block, really?
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's significant.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else you would like to add, John?
That's it.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to talk with us. It always helps to get a clearer picture of new information. Thank you. I respect that.
If you have any other questions, feel free to phone me.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And thank you, Kathy, for being his support. All right, we have adoptions of minutes of the regular meeting of June 13.
I don't move to adopt the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting from May 9th, 2017? June 13th. Oh, it's.
Yeah. No, it's June 13.
What am I looking at?
Mine says.
Mine says May 9th.
Mine says May 9th.
We have the wrong.
Is the header wrong?
Mine says June 13.
I can't even look up the minutes.
The one, the one that we had, I was pressing that.
That was wrong on my, I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll get the right minutes.
Okay.
As June.
I haven't tried.
June 13. Okay, so I'm sure. June 13. June 13.
Yeah, mine says the 5th, 9th, might come in.
That's what mine said.
Okay, all right.
And it won't come up.
You know what? And the mayor got the right copy.
Two on the right. I got it right.
So I would have checked it.
See the parking prices and.
All right, so you corrected your motion, Counselor.
I corrected my motion for June 13th.
We're just going to wait a second to see if we can bring them up.
Okay.
All right, technology is always an interesting feat. When it works, we love it. When it doesn't, it costs it.
If you want, let's, I'll have Sham fix it. If you want to postpone the motion, and then at the end of the meeting, you can come around to it.
I think it would make sense.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, we'll print some.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm getting through internet. Has I got three?
Same problem here. It says I'm connected, but my internet, and I wonder if I'm not connected, so.
I don't know, have to change the password downstairs? I don't think so.
Or just some of these.
Trying to.
Downloading.
They want to be downstairs.
Was somebody in the other?
Yeah, that's what Jill does in her spare time.
Mine says it's 2, but I couldn't.
It was hacked.
No.
That's not fun, what do you matter?
Yeah, it cost me $300. You're connected, but you don't have a connection. Nolan, any thoughts on the TOC Wi-Fi network?
Should be up. Is it not showing there?
Oh, it's showing, and it shows full, but there's no data going through it. Nobody can get any connection. Like they're connected, but they have no data.
Are you connected, Sham?
Yeah, I'm on that.
Is your Wi-Fi turned on, or is it turned off?
Oh, yeah.
I think we're connected to the network, we're just not connected to the internet.
Yeah.
All right.
Everyone's connected to the router. There's no data.
See everything that you open.
The seven hundred bill or six hundred.
Counselor, do you think you know enough of the material inside there for us to proceed, or do you want us to take a break?
Oh, well, we can just postpone that motion, like I can even.
No, she's referring to the others.
Did you get anything else?
Should have. Well, yeah, I got all my documents.
Do you understand the content?
Yeah, there's just three documents I can't open this week.
Okay, all right. So I will, I will try to.
The Park Enterprises thing.
People don't have a safety code.
I will try to give you as much of the background as I can.
That's very good.
Okay.
They're all in TOC Wi-Fi networks.
So we're going to go on six by law and policy. And the whole item there is election 2017 resolutions. And there are three motions that need, well, at least two motions that need to be done, and the third one, a decision to be made.
I'll go ahead and move to allow for the advance vote.
All right.
2017 minutes to allow.
Here is what we need to add, Counselor. In the past, we always done it one week before the election?
Right.
Actually, not in the motion, so the motion will not specify the date.
Okay, so we will then decide internally.
We can have some discussion about it, but the motion doesn't happen.
All right, so your motion is perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. So can we vote on that motion? All in favor? Thank you. So maybe a little bit of discussion is to decide when we want to have this advance voting. It has been tradition to have it one week before the election.
If I might, I think it's good for consistency, because people know when they expect it, to just keep it one week.
All right, so would you want a motion to direct you?
No.
No, not at all?
I'll just take that.
You take it as information?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so under two, allow for institutional vote. If you know, if you remember, we do that all the time. We have a mobile booth going there, so.
I'll move to allow for an institutional vote on election day, should have Plage, Temple City Villa, Leadcrest, Goodstair facility, and Austin.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Add on that, it's rather interesting.
Now, on this next item, I had a quick question. Is it the $25 deposit today?
Yes.
Does it still sit at $25?
Yeah, it'll change.
Okay.
I just, because I don't even remember, I thought it was higher.
No.
Years ago.
It was 25.
So.
Did you get that, buddy? That's probably me. We're not going to pay for my major bill.
So Counselors, this has been under books for.
Since 79.
1979.
And it's quite a lot.
All right, so there is no particular reason why we need a deposit, and there is no particular reason why not. So in other words, if you want to show status quo, we don't change anything.
So when I, once upon a time ran for election in another community before we were in Carson, theirs was a fair bit higher, four times as high. And getting it back was determined by whether or not you hit a threshold in the percentage of votes. I think the idea behind it being that you didn't have people running on a lark, it was, they were going to get serious out there and campaign and run for it.
Was it much bigger than ours?
It was exactly the same size as ours.
So I don't like you talking about.
Then I'll know if I didn't get my deposit back. But I think that, I actually think that the idea behind it is good in that it encourages people to get out there and work hard. I don't think it makes much difference. I mean, if you can't afford $100 for a deposit, probably can't afford something to go out there, so it's.
All right, so here's a comment, is interesting position to increase it to $100.
Was that your recommendation?
It was just a comment, that's all it is. And I had a. That wasn't 30 years ago. No, that wasn't 30 years ago.
A $25.
It was 20 years ago.
I'd be a vendor.
I've always thought that $25 was pretty cheap. It's easy to get in and out, and like you say, the $100 hits the serious people in there. $100 is a lot to let go, you know? But nevertheless, it puts the onus on them too. Like Counselor Warrens said, get out there and work and poll. You know, just get out there and throw your name on there for fun's sake, you know? And not everybody, I think you want serious people that are going to run for council. And I'd be prepared to make a motion to decrease to $100.
Counselor, be free to do so.
I move that, increase that rate?
No, I just go along with council laws. It shows genuine intent.
Counselor, people.
Yeah, so I thought a little bit about this, and my only hesitance in changing the status quo is when I think about the other communities that ran in this last election, and how there were so many who got in by affirmation, and some spots weren't even filled, they had to do two and then a third election just to try to fill all the seats. So I almost hate in a municipal election to deter anybody. We've been lucky in Carson, we've had a good turnout, we filled all our seats every time. I don't think we've ever had to have a second election, because we didn't get enough volunteers. But I'm just, you know, maybe, maybe a tier jump, maybe we go to 50, and then four years from now up to 100 or something. It's not a huge, significant number, but at the same time, I hate for only three people to run. I call for this guy.
Thank you. For what you said, Counselor Edmonds, as you shaking your head, so.
I'm good with the 100.
Okay.
I think if, when we're looking at the amount, the real question is, is what is the purpose of it? If the purpose is just for a deposit to put down, then we might as well get rid of it. If the purpose of it is to make sure that the people that are wanting to run are serious about running, then I don't think $100 is out of the range of making it, it's going to make it so somebody wouldn't run because of it. But it's enough that they're going to be serious about it to make sure that they actually do run or work.
Okay. All right, Counselor Creed, do you have an opinion?
I, like Councilpeople, I would maybe just double it this time, you know, like, we're taking a 400%.
We're not taking any.
Well, no, I don't.
You answered to use with information.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Do you know that it's pretty close to $100?
$100 isn't, you know, out of, out of reason, I think, for, so, I can deal with it.
Okay, if I hear you, there is probably a consensus to get it up.
I have a question. Once we decide what we're going to charge as a deposit?
Yes.
Are we going to also look at the Municipal Election Act, and that 56-2, where it's quite vague on the amount of votes that you have to have before you can get your return? Do we need to discuss that right now?
I think that's determined by the municipality.
Yeah, and in the past, it had to be 10%?
It's half.
No, it's.
It's the lowest.
Half of the lowest.
Half the lowest. So if the lowest fellow got in with 455 votes, then he would have to get 230, approximately, beginning of the block. And that's not unreasonable.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so.
Call for question.
Yeah, do you have a motion on the table here?
Just to proceed, this is a bylaw piece, it's not a resolution.
So you need.
So what we would probably need is a direction for administration.
To rescind.
To draft a new bylaw with this deposit, and that this would be rescinded by that new bylaw, and you can vote on it in July.
Yeah, I totally agree.
That's the motion that would be needed.
Yeah, so maybe you want to.
I make that recommendation to direct administration to adjust the bylaw, their bylaw, and to increase the amount from $25 to $100 for deposit.
Bylaw 1325.
Bylaw 1325 to increase that money, deposit to $100.
Okay.
Just leave it at that.
Alright.
Let's consider real serious.
That's rich people.
Oh, oh. Are in favor? Alright, okay, so we are updating the bylaw, thank you.
One, just a thought on that. So, we have a little situation where we are getting a little close, we're creeping up on that election, and I'm wondering if we're not gonna want to maybe read three readings in July, because we don't have a meeting till August, and then we're dang close. So, I don't know if there, you know, one of the reasons we don't like to do three readings is because we can notify the public. I'm wondering if we could run just a little information piece about it. It's not really that significant, but maybe like a little press release of, hey, here's a draft bylaw that we'll be voting on in July, ahead of the game, and see if we get any response or any negative comments. And then if not, maybe we'll go ahead and do a third reading.
Alright, I appreciate what you're saying. It's a procedural, it's procedural at this point.
In connection with that, I imagine at some point, and I'm quite asking if there's a time that we're going to have a candidate information session.
We intend to do that.
Do we have a projected date for that?
Before our July meeting, is that what you're...
Well, we usually have a meeting for people who are ready to... Candidate information session.
When is the timeline that they have to submit their...
September?
September 16th.
It's the month before the election. And it might not be exactly a month, but it's right in there, a month before.
So, it's usually a couple of weeks before that, I think, isn't it?
Last time you had one, I believe it was the week before nomination day, if I recall. So, it would have been either the very first week of September. I think it was in the first week of September, is when it was before.
So, I mean, we could, we could put this, you know, do the first reading and then the second reading and our meeting in August, it would still, as long as we...
You mean the third reading in August?
Because it's gonna hit it, you know, as long as we have it in place by the time we do our candidate that information session, there's no urgency.
Yeah, I'll double check to make sure there's not a requirement that it's passed. I don't recall there being, as long as it's in place by nomination day. I think you're okay.
I believe that's correct.
So, you would have, the second Tuesday, so 8th of August is your August meeting, I think.
Right, so it's early August, so we could do that.
Okay, alright, so are we okay with that? Thank you for bringing that up.
It was just a thought, with our summer schedule, we don't meet at August.
It's good talk, thank you so much.
Have we determined dates yet? I don't guess, I don't know if I was making...
Those dates, those dates, what?
For a meeting.
That was done at organizational meeting.
July 11th through August 8th.
We only have like eight more meetings together, seven.
Seven, sorry.
I had to get that.
You know something, I was thinking exactly the same, you know? Don't read my mind, that's dangerous.
Well, no, is it live?
11th, August 8th.
So, it's the second Tuesday of each.
Second Tuesday.
Yeah, second Tuesday of each.
Alright.
So, we're good?
So, did we get that motion?
It's passed.
Okay, let's go to other business.
So, that's the point, I was just gonna say, for old time's sake though, maybe we could hand type that on a typewriter this way. I'm just gonna, sorry.
Alright, we just had our delegation, John Schaefer talking for Schaefer Investment, talking about a new option for 11 Street West. I wonder, Jeff, if you could enlighten us regarding the comment of Mr. Schaefer and the comparison he made with the Toon development. Could you please help us with that?
So, Nolan and I were looking for this number yesterday, and we believe the number we gave him was correct. But, yeah, when Cody went in, we ran a four-inch sewer and probably a three-quarter inch, one-inch water line into his property.
140 feet. I just went down and measured.
Okay, so why...
Not 225, 100.
Why is that...
He's using the width of Dave Nays' lot.
Is all we went to the property line and we stopped. He took it from there.
Okay, so your figure is really 141 feet, which would mean $100 per foot.
Well, but either way, he's saying there's a significant discount because we took it from 10th to the property line. Cody then hired a contractor to take it from his property line to his home, as would be the utility by law. So, that's what we do. And so, I think we all understand it's not the same monster varying a four-inch line and a one-inch line, not building a road, ditches, manholes, sewer mains, valves, connections, hydrants. So, let's be clear, we're not talking about the same scale. And while he's right, the trench is a trench, but it's not the same monster. And the difference is, is that, in my opinion, and I may be incorrect here, but when we do those connections in what we call, what do we call it? Not the rural, but the country residential or the larger lots, we charge them our cost to go from the utility to the property, and they take it from there. So, that's how that was pressed.
One other thing about Toons is, it was high, it's on the top of that hill. There was no water, there was no problem, we just shot right through there. Gravel road, done.
Yeah, we just went through an empty field.
So, do you suspect there is a different topology?
Like huge difference.
So, it's a bit of a different monster, and so Cody paid the cost of that four-inch line and one-inch water. That's what he paid to his property, and then he's got quite a length to his home from there.
Okay, so we get that other feat that John Schaefer's talking about, from his property line.
Well, I know John's calculating the width of Dave Nays' lot. So, I don't know exactly where that line started, I just don't know. But that's what he was measuring.
But you guys know exactly that's 141?
I just went down and measured the width of Dave Nays' lot, it's 140 feet. And we may have gone a little bit into the road, but not very far.
So, his contention is, why can't we do it for the same, oh, and it's not the same construction, to be frank? You know, building a road with roadbed and doing all the compaction, and we didn't have any of that on Cody's, we went through an empty field. And we ran some lines and buried them. I can't speak to depths either. Cody being high where he is, it might be six feet deep for all, you know? I just, these are pieces of information I don't know. Whereas when you put them in the roadway down there, they could be very deep, I don't know. And it's been, we just had this discussion while Cody's was done as a utility connection for cost, where Jim's looking to literally build a private road now that he would own. It's been the policy position of council, we're not doing that at cost. There's a rate, we quoted. And I know he takes exception to the fact that we quoted in the road builders' rates. We've been very upfront from the beginning, that's what he was quoted with. We use the road builders' rates to quote. We've never told him otherwise, and he understands that. So, that's the number we came up with when we quoted him. So, this is, it's an interesting concept that he's proposing. And again, not having any, I wasn't aware of it until the same time you were, so I haven't been able to really chew on it and run the numbers yet, right? I just don't know.
This is what the danger is when we have delegation at the last minute, because we never have a proper backgrounder to be able to really comprehend the situation.
It may be appropriate if you want this same backgrounder to come back in July, but we're armed with numbers on the proposal.
Well, I really feel that unless we have proper understanding comparative and whatever, and understanding the difference between those two constructions, how can we as council make decision on the fly? It's not wise.
Yeah, so I think, you know, again, without numbers, we can't make any decisions. But I think we can kind of get a philosophical direction. Couple of points, this idea of private ownership of this municipal, you know, grid road, there's something doesn't sound right, and based on what he ended with, which was really, he'd be happy with an endeavor to assist on a town-owned property. And of course, part of that motivation is, he doesn't want to do dust control for the rest of eternity. And that's fair, right? But this idea of private ownership of road, I don't think that's something, at least I'm willing to consider at this time.
And then on that, to be clear, the road of John's land and partially, no, of Toons and half of John's, that's already subdivided, and the town has that.
Right.
It's actually, if I'm not mistaken, only 30 feet on John's land are already subdivided off the road. So, he doesn't actually own that land anymore.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I think maybe we need to really have a clearer picture. Councilor Bantry, I'm sorry, you were pressing queue.
I've got some real concerns. Number one, this endeavor to assist never come to us until after the fact. This whole proposal was started long before we ever come to this endeavor to assist. And...
On the Third Avenue problem.
Yeah. It's a money issue. The second thing that I am concerned about is, who is profiting from this lab sale and the services putting in and stuff like that? Is it John Schaefer as an individual, or is it Schaefer Investments?
I would think it's Schaefer Investments. I would think it's the investment company.
I don't know, yes.
I don't think it's that.
And, no. Regardless whether it matters or not, my concern is, if we wanted endeavor to assist, I think it should have been brought out in the original proposal before anything was ever started. And that way, we have a clear understanding of what we were gonna be doing, how it was gonna be done, and all the facts and figures were there. Now, I just have a problem with doing this after the fact.
Yeah, but also, this is doable, so that's all that I can say.
Just to be clear though, it's my understanding that Mr. Schaefer is abandoning his request for an endeavor to assist on Third.
This is about 11th.
This is just on 11th going forward.
That's a new project.
There doesn't seem to be an appetite to pursue Third. The endeavor on Third, I should say. But this is going forward on 11th.
That was the first question, I mean, this really is coming in at the beginning of this, because it's about 11th on Third.
Did we get the same problem with, when we did the Ellison subdivision? Absolutely not. That was all taken care of, and everything was done. Did we have the same situation when the Shaw development come in? Absolutely not.
Yeah, but you don't...
Now, the question is also, Don Williams purchased that property from Mr. Pagasse. Was there a caveat or something like that, that Don Williams has actually signed that 30 feet over?
There is definitely, my understanding, some discussion that we had on that one.
Yeah, and...
There's not a team yet.
There is not a review at all.
That is where the difficulty lies, is that we do not really absolutely know what the position of the different landowner around that potential road. And I really feel that we should make due diligence once and for all, and get it in writing, and if it fails, it fails. But at least we will know the true position of all the landowner once and for all. Not something that was signed six years ago, but something that is current.
So, my main point is, is that words matter. And one of the problems that we have when we have a delegation that came in like today where there's no background material, is even the delegation towards, when he talked about ownership of the road, and then at the end, that's not really what he's talking about. So, it becomes more difficult for us to make a determination even based on what it is he's asking for, because the words were pretty jumbled, it wasn't clear what he was asking for.
Counselor, I 100% agree, this is why I thought, I spoke to Councilor Brown, and I say we have risked to not truly have the right picture to discuss the problem, because there is no background in it. Jeff, it's just your voice.
So, I, and again, I appreciate that, the words and the intent. You know, like, for instance, what does it mean that he'll build the road? Does that mean that he'll do it with his own...
The way he did Third?
The way he did Third? Or does him building the road mean he'll pay us to build the road? He'll cover the cost for us to build the road? Which I think is our policy, as per Third's quality is still not up to stuff.
Uh, Counselor, I would caution you that, because we have engineering reviewers, there were some soft spots, those have been fixed. And it has been now deemed to be at reasonable standard. So, I think we have to be careful.
Just one thing to keep in mind, and again, this is where words matter. You can have a, what's the word I want here? A primitive road sufficient to get a subdivision. It doesn't mean you have an appropriate road for the future.
And then you have the dust, and you have all the misery for all the...
What I'm saying with primitive road, you have a Seventh Avenue that's never built to withstand the traffic that it does now. We allowed development on a primitive road, 10th Street, just right next to it. You have an inferior road that isn't built to the spec. So, I think, you know, Mr. Schaefer's proposal is intriguing, because really, it might be, I'm looking at it a couple of ways. If we were to look at, and I'm not proposing we do, but if we get an understanding of our dead costs to put in the utility, and he's building the whole road, but we want to recover those costs via local improvement, that's a potentially much smaller impact on the other landowners than we initially have been anticipating. Now, that may not be the way to go, but we just don't know the numbers yet. And we can find that out relatively quickly. That's not a problem, you know, next council meeting would be appropriate to have those numbers. But it may be, if we were to go to the owners right now and say, we're looking at local improvement, we want to know what your opinion is, we're using this number, but council may be agreeable to do it for this number. Their answer may be very different. It depends on which number, that's exactly right.
So, this bears again, for us as council to get proper facts and proper figures, because unless we have that proper comparison, unless we have that, we cannot make a proper decision.
So, the one other thing that I would add that kind of goes along with Council Pete, what I was saying, is from a philosophical perspective, where this council and previous council came down on it, the reason why we have this policy, point blank, was because of this issue, that we put together a policy that was designed that the developers would be responsible for the cost of putting that in, and that if we were doing it, it would be done at what road construction and normal rates are. And contrary to some comments I've heard over the last little while, I don't think we have this huge double margin on what we're charging compared to what it actually, our costs are for doing stuff. Our labor cost when we have our men doing that, that's factored in to everything. It's not like they're sitting around not doing anything, we're paying them to sit around and not do anything. They're, we bill ourselves on the projects, and we get grants on that same basis in order to be able to transfer those funds and to pay their wages. So, when you understand how the finances work on how we're actually running a budget, those guys aren't just sitting around not doing anything. They're being billed out even as it stands now.
Alright, Counselor, you make a...
Opportunity cost, and if they're not doing... If they're not doing that good project, are we gonna not do it? Because we're gonna put them over there, and we're gonna have to cut something somewhere.
It's a very interesting point that...
You make a proper argument, there is no...
On Second Avenue, for example, we're billing the progress at their hourly rate, based on the road they're over.
Okay, so maybe what we need to do is possibly direct administration to come up with half cost and bring it back to council.
Also in that, and I'll just throw out, would you like us, prior to next meeting, to meet with the other landowners just to confirm their position on the road?
That'd be valuable.
I've always felt that.
That is something that I suggested earlier, and I honestly think that's part of due diligence. And I honestly believe we should. So, we need a motion to have a direction.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. And just one last comment before I do, and that is, again, philosophically, I'd like to see this cleaned up, you know, sooner rather than later type thing.
I agree with that.
And so, there's a little bit of a, man, if we can just get something, and then we can get some development going, and then who knows, that would lead to good things. And when I hear stories about like Seventh or Tenth, and you got slightly substandard roads that people could point to and say, why are you holding me to a higher standard than this perfectly good road right here? You know, and so, it's tough, it's tough. But I'll go ahead and make the motion to direct administration to collect some proper numbers, speak to the adjoining landowners, and bring back to our next council meeting some options, some recommendations.
Does it work, question?
One thought, and I'm here too. We need to review on those cause apples to apples, because, like you said, Mr. Toon's property was a different situation with soil conditions and everything. And the lower you go, the higher the water table is, and the conditions are different, and the costs are higher. And so, we need to look at that as well in this motion.
Yeah, I mean, it's not difficult to get proper cost from a...
Nolan, I appreciate that motion. What we'll intend to do, I think, if it'll help the conversation as well, we have had a look at road builders' rates on the road, we know that number. We'll have another look at it just to make sure we feel it's comprehensive. But we'll also try and estimate what, and we knew this from our policy decision a couple of meetings ago, what our costs are when we take out depreciation and take out those variable costs. We can look at applying the new policy, those rates to the same thing, see where that falls out. Brennan can probably go so far as to give me just a segment, here's the cost of the materials. You know, and here's, we can try and break that down as best we can, and then really have that on the table, how much there is for what we consider margin. Although we know from our last one, it's not that, not as high as some may think it is.
And I really honestly believe that at the end of the day, this council does not want to see substandard building of roads in our town. It has to be at proper standard, it's to our benefit.
The other thing, maybe I'll just throw out, that Nolan and I were having some conversation on, and we see it on Third, immediately, we're going to start getting calls about dust suppression on that road. There's no question.
Of course.
And we're gonna have a $40,000 touch to put oil on it, or something like that, all of a sudden. And so, the question is, when we look at this, are we going to expect the developer, or are we going to include within our local improvement or caveated costs, or whatever that might look like? One, do we take it all the way to paving, first of all? Or second, do we at least do it with a, you know, a good quality dust abatement that we know we're on the hook for every three or four years? Which again, just at that, you'll never recover your dust abatement costs and taxes ever in the history of the road. ever in the history of the road. But that's another story. So we've been discussing, how thorough should we be looking to charge or recoup costs? Because it's inevitable that we're 60 days away from the first resident on Third Avenue complaining about dust.
Actually, one of the questions I was going to ask about ownership is, if you own it, are you then paying for the dust abatement, the repairs?
Here is maybe a point there on Seventh. When we do the dust abatement, who absorbs the cost?
So in that case, whenever you do it out of general tax revenue, you assume general benefit. Now, because it's a through road, you can assign a little more general benefit than you can to Eleventh.
Okay, so it would be the same story on Second East?
Correct, yep, so we're looking at general benefit.
So it's so fair to, from a freeway?
Yep, yep. So just something we'll try and break out to consider, because, you know, wait. For example, on Third, and Nolan, correct me if I'm wrong here, but on Third, the development agreement only required Mr. Schaefer to get it to the condition to gravel. And his intent was that if those residents wanted to pave down the road, they would all chip in and pave it. Or we would do it and charge them local improvement tax. We know we're going to have a fight on our hands when the time comes to pave it, because none of them are going to want to pay $50,000 apiece to pave the road. And I don't blame them, absolutely don't blame them. So the question is, if we're going to do development agreements, for example, on Eleventh or the adjacent properties, do we consider a higher level of road construction? Which is expensive, that's the problem with it, it's terribly expensive.
Just one other thing too, is that if we pave Eleventh and Third, what are the 10th Street guys going to say, because it ain't paved?
Or Seventh Avenue.
Well, that, you know, that again, it becomes another, a little bit of a conversation, because I remember that two councils ago, there was a counselor that visited with me and said, "My position is that every street in this town should be paved." No improvement or whatever. It's important for the town, healthier for the town, less dust altogether.
So I walk on the sides.
So at this point, it becomes a little bit of a position of council as to what their view as being, as being their position regarding roads?
Well, and related to that, and there's some onus on the developer, and we can work on that too. What is the expectation of the purchaser of that lot? What is communicated to them to be their expectation? You know, if it's very clear that the only way paving happens is by local improvement, they know that going in, it's very clear.
And so there is all that, that somehow we don't quite have the right tool in place, it seems to me, in order to have an easy decision-making. And I don't really know what is it that we need, but it's not quite working as great.
I tend to see things in numbers, basically. And, I mean, when you look at it just in brief numbers, if you take that road, if we did that road as a town, which is what they really like us to do, you're talking about 7% of our total budget. So that means everybody's, that means everybody's either got to raise their taxes on every property in town by 7%, or we have to cut back on the stuff we're doing by 7%. It's not like there's this endless money pit there that we can keep drawing money out to pay for stuff.
The difficulty with that whole area is that there's never will be enough subdivision to be able to pay...
That's right.
...back the cost of the improvement.
And we don't have a shortage of properties in town to build on right now. Our inventory is not short, there's lots of empty lots in town to build on.
Okay, all right, so there is, there is...
Nolan, let's go on one thing.
Yes.
When I talked to Mr. Schaefer earlier today, I reminded him that, you know, it's all about numbers, like you're saying. And I said, "You have to be aware that we had a hit, about 130,000 bucks this year, of money that we had planned on, budgeted for, that was taken away from us, that we don't have." So I threw out, "Where does the money come from to pay for this development?" I said, "It may not be in the best interest at this time, we must move forward on this, but I said, "We have to, we have to figure out something." And I said, "It's all about money, and where is it going to come from?"
But I think deeper than that, we have to understand why we want to do it.
Philosophically, do we want the town to be the one to pay for it?
So I don't think, well, I think we had a position, and I think we have a position, and the problem is, we haven't budged from that position.
Well, in all fairness, talk about dollars, you know, one thing John has always said is he's willing to pay his fair share. It's the adjacent landowners that aren't willing to chip in, making it difficult for John to get any kind of development.
Okay, so I think we need that motion to direct administration.
We have any further...
We need, any further questions? No, all in favor? Thank you, so that will be brought back to next, at next council meeting in July. Okay, Seventh East, Creekside Development. Now that is an interesting proposition, or request. That is not one that is surprising to me, considering that there is already at least three presidents. What I really think, when you start to make tax concession, I think you have to be fair, what is true for one should be true for the other. But my point of view, there's a little bit of a different position here that we should maybe entertain. First of all, only the municipal portion can be the object of concession. When it comes to school tax and tax for the senior, that has to be paid, because we are requisitioned. But I also think that because of the type of development that we're dealing with, would it be, maybe wise to say, if we have a tax concession, that it would be reviewed within five years? Considering that we do not know what's going to be built there, or what would happen. So my point of view is, we might need to look at a time limit. Would there be something we would be going to take?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Yes.
So my question on this, you know, when you consider concessions, you consider the history, maybe a little bit? And so I'm curious, I don't know if we've had a full report on this subdivision. Is everything coming along, are all deadlines being met? Are all expectations, are we on good terms?
Yes, to your question. So Mr. Atkins has satisfied the requirements of the town, I think, pretty much all the way across. His timeline for being ready to sell is his timeline now, really. You know, he's got, I think, planning on roadwork here right away, and that'll pretty much have him close to ready to go, I think. His water sewer are in, electrical's in, and I think the last thing is paving.
So part of my question also was, there were some disputed areas along the golf course, the bathroom being moved, at whose cost? Are all of those resolved, and everything good? Because I hate to grant a concession and then have a big fight in six months.
No, no, I don't anticipate that, I'm not...
Saved in thousands, for thousands.
They're resolved, it's not how I wanted it to be, but it's fairly resolved. Let's put it that way. Mr. Atkins' subdivision is his subdivision, and while it encroaches on the course inconveniently, that's the land he bought, and we don't have recourse to claim it back. That's the fact of the matter, and we've had to be okay with that. So yeah, there's nothing, this is one of the very last items, and unfortunately, this piece was the one piece that was not specified in the development agreement. And so when that happens, Mr. Atkins got his assessment for the year, called and said, "Hold on a second. I'm being taxed as though they're all residential lots." The deal was, I wouldn't be taxed at that assessment level until they were subdivided, or sold, sorry, in his case, they're already subdivided, so until they're sold. And like the mayor said, that is consistent with other larger developments that we have in the town, and I kind of think that Mr. Atkins is probably correct in his assertion that that was the plan, and it was never put into the development agreement. So when we talk about concessions, the fact we have levied this amount is one thing, but we've never historically collected this amount. So we're not cutting him a check back, we're not giving him any cash, we're simply holding the municipal portion, potentially, depending on your motion. Holding his municipal obligation till he sells.
What I asked Jeff is, moving forward, how do we close those loopholes? And Jeff assured me that with Nolan, they're reviewing that whole package that is given to land developer, where that would be one of the items to be included in the land development contract. And I feel satisfied that once we have those updated, we're closing loopholes, little by little.
I'm not sure that I would agree so much that that's a loophole, in that when a developer comes in to do a big project like that in a small community like ours, they know they're not going to sell all those lots right away. And I think it would be really detrimental in the long term for us to start charging the full municipal tax on that.
But when I talk about loophole, what I'm trying to say is, and it's the wrong term, it's an item that should have been specified...
Oh, in the development, it was misguided. No, I would agree with that, yeah.
But when I talk about loophole, it's not to be detrimental...
It's a case of putting it into the development, and it not being there.
So we're not there 10 years later, trying to discuss an item that should have been dealt 10 years ago.
And my only question on that is, last I had heard, you know, we had maybe an easement question that wasn't being granted, that should have been, and so I was just thinking, hey, if we say, if you'll allow a certain, you know, trail to cut through here, sign here...
Are you talking about the reserve, Counselor?
And we'll agree to this. Sorry, Nolan, I'm talking about the golf course specifically.
No, no, but are you talking...
I think there's a place where the cart trail goes up on his property, doesn't it? Shove the trail, and then, and we were asking for an actual easement, and he said, "No, just a handshake and some permission is all you'll get." And I'm thinking, "Or now you're coming and asking us for a concession." So I think that a legal municipal easement is not unreasonable for this dollar amount that we're about to...
Other than, he could very easily make the argument that we agreed to the, well, that we agreed to that beforehand, even though it wasn't in the agreement, and historically, he'd be able to show presence, that's what we normally do. So I get your idea of using leverage to say, hey...
Fair and contracted.
We'd probably already agreed to do that before he, when he first did the project.
To do this, you're sorry.
To do this concession.
Yeah, but I always feel that we already agreed we'd have an easement on a cart path too. It's like, hey, you want to go back, and, you know, how it was really understood in the beginning.
You're talking about how back, I don't know that you would buy it.
So, anyway.
I hear you, Counselor, but...
Here's where I'm going to really have regrets. Five years from now, we've granted this, and then now we realize, oh, no, now you got to move your cart path off my properties. And it's like, dang, what about, you know...
Well, I can tell you right now, that's probably going to happen.
Sure, unless we have a...
At some point it will, because those lots, in order for that path to stay there, the lots that that path is on are going to have to be smaller.
Right, that's right.
Gordon, Mr. Atkins has been really good about saying, "Just continue to do it until they're sold." Like, "So as long as I own them, I don't care."
Right, yeah.
You know, and then when they're by a third party, then they pass on his property. That's the fact of the matter, and I don't like the boundaries, never have.
I do have that, because unfortunately, that's what happened.
Before we came...
Yeah, before we came, it's like... Counselor Van Gundy?
I like your review idea merit, but I think it needs to be in less years, maybe, maybe in two years. And that way, we're not looking at a complete council cycle. I'm sure this will come up...
Oh, I see where you're coming.
I can see this coming up after the new council comes in, immediately after the new council comes in, but if we have it in a two-year review policy...
I think the reality is though, is that based on the number of those lots that I think could reasonably be expected to be sold in the next five years, I think five years would be actually on the short end of the review process, because it's not going to change in the next two years.
You never know, he's a Schaefer, you never know, his contacts down here.
Okay.
So a lot of property... Well, if they're sold off, then it doesn't change, because it goes automatically to pay the taxes.
Okay, so the minute you put a house, the full tax comes to the town, right? So if you put five years, and some houses have been built in between, the town will collect the taxes, right? But in five years' time, if nothing has been built and nothing has been fully developed, then it's up to council to decide, wait a minute, maybe tax concession are not to the benefit of the town, because nothing's happening.
Maybe we save time limit on...
Those are sitting vacant, and really, it's a concession that maybe is not the best move for the citizen of the town, right?
Yeah, the time limit, the purpose of it is to motivate, motivate the developer to sell the lots, so that we can't just sit on them forever. Of course, he should be, he probably wouldn't want to anyway, because I mean...
You've got a lot of money tied up.
Money tied up there. So it's just putting, it's just putting another incentive for him to try to, you know, push, you know, get those lots sold.
Okay, Counselor, can we have a motion? Thank you.
I'll move to, for lack of better words, grant this concession on a fire review basis. Tax concession on a fire review basis.
On the municipal portion only?
Yeah, on the municipal portion only, as the rest of it's...
On the Atkins development.
As the rest of the property, the rest of the taxes, not eventual taxes.
Yeah, okay, questions?
Yeah, one quick question. So maybe when I was over, I missed it, but there is still some tax that is going to be collected for this property, right?
Well, the...
The tax 34...
Based on the whole land, not...
It would be farm land, taxes.
Okay, so it's not law right now?
No.
It won't be residential lot, it'd be farm land.
But if they're sold, then...
But we cannot, we cannot do that, only on this court.
Right, yeah, okay.
And just one last question about the motion. Do we need to specify in there that it's on the unsold lots? I mean, is that a given in the agreement?
I think so.
Okay. So I just don't want to read that motion to come back.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. If Miss Christian can contact Mr. Atkins and give him a sense of what we discussed. Seventh C, Park Enterprise Contract. As you know, Park Enterprise is the company that we have hired to do our inspections and whatever else is needed when you do the building of any sorts of infrastructure in town. So this is a company that is also hired by the county, which is a benefit to us, because they're in town fairly often. And what we need to do is, if you feel so inclined, to approve the contract extension as administration has made you aware of the cost we saw them when we first approved the contract, but they should not be divulged in public as if we have to put those costs to a bidding, it would give an unfair advantage to those who would be in our system.
There's a question. Are we satisfied with them over the years?
I don't work closely with them, but Nolan suggests that he feels they're doing a good job for us. I asked him that very...
As a recent user of their permitting process, they're pretty diligent.
That pretty so, just, Counselor Van Gundy?
I don't have a question, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion to...
Approve the contract?
Approve the contract extension for Park Enterprises. Approve the contract extension for Park Enterprises.
That's good enough.
Yeah. Plenty of several.
Questions?
It's in your, it's in your background.
Yeah.
Then it shows that I think the town is very satisfied with it.
Looking, looking for the background, and I couldn't find a bit.
Under seven.
Yeah, I just, the question is, what, in words here, we're calling it contract extension rather than a contract renewal, is, is it basically saying something?
Yeah.
Or would you speak to.
Let me see what they call it specifically here.
This administration requires a motion to approve any contract extension for the service.
Yeah, so it will be, basically, it's like the contract renewal, the same thing as, or I mean, it would be considered the same as that, the renewal of the contract for what period?
It's three years.
For three years, so.
Yeah. The proposal is three years.
Okay. So we'll go to 2020.
So, yeah, maybe you want to add that to your motion.
Yeah, so the extension would extend to 2020.
Yeah. Does that work?
Expires June 30th, 2020.
Okay, so that would work. All right. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. The next item is a very interesting opportunity for municipality to obtain grants regarding first nation programming, housing, different type of possibility to create better environment, better opportunities. I find it interesting and rather intriguing, and I'm thinking, I hate to lose a grant if there is a possibility of doing something. I was wondering if that would be something that we want to discuss with Blood Tribe representative, or with people of SCSS, and different, maybe stakeholders in the community, and try to see what could be possible under the parameters that are given to us in an application. I'm just curious, I find it intriguing, and I have the feeling there is possibly something we could do, but I'm not so sure what.
Yeah, I agree, I really hopeful that there's some good potential here for us. Couple of thoughts. Number one, for me, this looks like a good argument in favor of municipal census, because if we could come up with a number of a proper percentage of actual, you know, indigenous people living in our town, and if they really do constitute, you know, 15, 20% or, yeah, 100%, whatever that number might be, that would be good to have some hard numbers to present in grant applications like this. Because even, even despite the fact that we're on the border of the reserve, just, just independent of that, we have a good enough case here locally within our own community. Secondly, though, it's been, just my experience since I've served on council, that the hardline philosophy of chief and council has been, they don't like to support initiatives that don't directly fund projects on those. So I think if we're looking for a collaboration, it's going to be a hard sell, because they'll say, well, why isn't this money being spent here? You know, they don't really.
Because it is a program that is trying to target transitions.
Right.
And which is a very different story than people living on the reserve or people being.
Which is why, I'm just saying, we might end up doing this, or having to do this on our own, independent of.
Yes.
And I think we have a strong enough faith to do so.
Okay, good point.
Okay, from a realtor's perspective, there already is a transition program in place. These people can, can buy homes off reserve in carts in Lett Bridge, wherever it is, and they can get up to $20,000 as a deposit towards the purchase of the house, and I personally have done several of those. So that is kind of a transitional program that's available, that the Blood Tribes and other native reservations are administering themselves. That's their program.
But that's a different.
But I'm just saying, it's a transition program, because there are people on the reserve who want to own their homes. They don't have that opportunity on, to own it and to be able to sell it, whereas they have that, they can purchase within a surrounding community and have that money. And it is an initiative that.
So that is one of the initiatives.
And it could be in addition to this.
Yeah, there are many other initiatives regarding transitions.
Three, four, five.
For example, Lett Bridge has many transitional programs for indigenous people, especially young people who come from the reserve and come live in their town, go to college, et cetera. Because these stuffs are not quite used to be the way of the urban living, so it's different. So anyways, would you want to make a recommendation to administration to pursue, to pursue this?
So just a question regarding that to Jeff. Is this something that would maybe benefit from some kind of an ad hoc committee? Because, you know, like, I hate to just throw it all on administration and, hey, with your limited staff, figure this out.
Which I appreciate.
No, this is why I said we need, we need leaders, we need people of the community.
Yeah, this, this just came in last Friday, it was just before I was finishing with the agenda, and I looked at it and thought, there's something here, I just don't know what it is. I haven't been able to put my finger on it. Yeah, administration would welcome some input from whether we use our intermunicipal committee, it could be an appropriate committee to use, we haven't ever used it in that fashion before.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's quiet as far as county negotiations for a while. So it could be an intermunicipal committee discussion, or an ad hoc of interested counselors.
Yeah, I even wondered, the Blood Tribe is trying to do quite a few things in Los Angeles, and creating those transition programs. I'm kind of curious to know what initiatives they're working on, so that we don't duplicate but that for the people in town.
Yeah, however you wanted to do that, we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Okay.
I agree, it might be good for a municipal to take a look at, you know.
And the county is always saying, you know, we have all the reserve, they always call them something like a donut in the corner, and so essentially, I think they might be interested also.
Just because it's an urban transitions thing, the county really wouldn't have a role here.
That's right.
This is transitioning to the urban setting off of this area.
So if you say.
Not to say they shouldn't be at the table, but.
If you say intermunicipal, so what are we looking at?
I was just thinking the town of Blood Tribe.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking myself at first.
And even then, I'm almost seeing that this might, might be town and the indigenous people within the town. You know, like, I think that there's something we can do there, and because sometimes we, you know, we get put on hold a little bit, if we go outside.
I think the, the question then is, is let's explore that.
Exactly, I think let's explore.
Let's not limit it.
With the intention, but with the intention of moving ahead, if there's no, no desire on the other end.
So does administration need a motion to?
Yeah, that too. Let's hold on a second, we have a question.
Just a question, yeah. Do we have any information on the size or the, or the timeline?
The timeline, we do have.
Well, on the side, it specifically says that there's no minimum or maximum, every application will be judged based on its merits and perceived outcomes. Now, I assume there actually would be a maximum.
Yeah.
But it says there isn't, and I'm just failing to find the deadline on this, I don't recall it, I'm just having a quick look here.
I know, I knew it and I forget.
I didn't recall one on this.
Was it December 2017 or something?
I don't remember seeing.
I don't either.
Okay, maybe I dropped it. All right, well, that's good.
Anyway, I think it is working.
All right, so we have a motion.
I'll move to direct administration to pursue auctions and available opportunities under the urban issues program.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, let's move to eight, financial report of April, as of April 30th, 2017. You might look at it and say to yourself, okay, there is a figure there that I cannot quite comprehend.
One that looks like we're in a hole.
Yeah, okay, exactly, I thought you would ask me that one. It's under cash and temporary investment. So very simply, what it means, it means that we are digging into a line of credit. We have a line of credit of $600,000. It is cheaper for us to dig into a line of credit and to open up our long-term investment is definitely a better move. So from, from time to time, you will see that line go up and down, it will vary depending on the deposit that you're going.
Believe me. Yeah, this is the time.
Yeah. What is the interest rate? That's a good question, I do not know.
I don't have all specifically.
But anyway, what is, what is certain is half of what we can make, or is half of what we could make if we.
It's part of our investment.
So, so how can we always, how can we always take the position that benefited the town?
Discuss with the word council, but how's that going to work?
So the, the other one I was curious about is taxes receivable, we still have $74,000 on the books that have not been collected. Right now, we do not have three years of tax backlog, in other words, no house will be put on, on a block for taxes. However, there is possible, possibility for that to happen 2018, we shall see.
I think that's important to know, that corresponds with what we're seeing economically.
Yeah.
That's what it's, it's.
So it's always difficult to collect, but Chile is quite, very much on the top of that.
And it's a question to Jeff, with that tax receivable yet coming in, would that include some of those who we are helping to give them time to pay over a period of time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's.
All right.
Taxes aren't due till July 1st, so everybody's still due until that.
So if you, yeah, but you have to realize that if it is receivable, it's because those were 2016 taxes.
Yeah.
Those are at least a year old.
So this is why 2016, 17, 18, 18, we're starting in a recovery mode. Okay, so essentially, if you have no question regarding that, we need to.
I'll move to approve the balance sheet.
Okay.
And do we do the?
Just do financial statements.
Financial statements as presented.
Thank you, counselor.
The two.
No further questions, everybody mentioned, so all in favor? Thank you very much. Now, under nine committee reports, there is less and less reports, because there's less and less meetings, and that's not one for the summer. However, we're going to try to look at different reports.
Mayor.
Yes.
One thing I forgot to mention, and I'm sorry I didn't email it, we got, remember we sent a letter to requisitioning boards about how municipal census, so any that responded, I just put in their respective committee report.
I saw that, yeah. Thank you.
I have one on Chief Mountain already.
Counselor, it's good that you want to talk about Chile Mountain, because I had some questions for you.
Right, that's, that's fine. So the one issue that came up in our last meeting, that, that we wanted, you know, to kind of go back to each council and just get a feel for this, is Blood Tribe, as you know, has imposed a business fee for all businesses conducting business on the reserve. So it's 500 bucks. So there was a, there was a clause in their policy that said, unless, you know, you're working for the Blood Tribe, you know, if you're doing work for the Blood Tribe. So they, they requisitioned us for 500 dollars. We wrote back, we do business with the tribe, we're good, according to your clause. Chief Counsel then met and amended it to remove that clause, so that we didn't have to pay. So that, in fact, they just sent us an amended bylaw, that's just for that 500 bucks. And so, we're looking at this, the way that 500 dollars gets divided between the 13 municipalities is we all would just share, in an extra requisition, a little piece of that, not the end of the world, but philosophically, some of the other committee members, specifically the villagers, had a problem, they, so, so what they're saying is, well, what if we all impose a 500 dollar fee, allow the garbage collection to come into our municipalities and pick up our trash? And then each municipality pay, you know, 500, then we all get requisitioned for that 500. So I, they were looking for, hey, go back to your councils and see if there's a fair, like, do we just want to say, you know what, now we'll pay it, we don't care? Kirkston, of course, pays slightly bigger portion of that 500 than, say, Glenwood.
I have an issue with that.
So, so there's like three of our options, but what do we?
I think us all charging 500 dollars for the authority to come in and pick up our garbage is simply counterproductive, and is us.
Exactly.
Creating another.
Level of.
Level of administration bureaucratic nightmare, that doesn't actually do anything other than, say, the Blood Tribe, we can all charge 500 dollars for it. I, I agree, I fundamentally disagree with the step that the Blood Tribe has taken on that, but 500 bucks.
I was personally inclined to ignore it when I heard about it, and, but there were, but I'm in a minority on that.
Yeah, but essentially.
No, I believe you.
Most of them want to push back.
Counselor.
So, so that would be divided up between all of the members of.
It'd just be part of the requisition.
Right, so if they got a portion of the 500 dollars and said, add it, 100 bucks.
It just gets added, no, just added to requisitions, the Blood Tribe would have to pay their portion.
Well, that, we could create a bylaw that said, any municipality that charges has to pay their own.
No, no, no. If it comes out of the general revenues of the thing, that it's part of the overall requisition, it's only become part of Blood Tribe's requisition.
Right, but not entirely, they only pay 25% of the tribe.
That's right.
So the rest of us subsidize 75% of the 500.
Yeah, well, okay.
That's correct, that was what they, they had a philosophical.
So we pay 350?
Yeah, so my, my question is, do we want to be right, or do we want to be happy?
Right.
I'd rather be happy.
I'd rather be happy, I don't see any value to having to fight over 350 bucks.
Right, which to our count is like closer to 75.
Yeah, yeah, for us, it's 75 bucks.
But that's annual, but, yeah.
My problem with that here is, is this is one move. You have to transfer position, what's the next move?
Right, so you're saying, here's a concession, why don't we draw the line at this, say, no more silliness after this.
They have a transfer position, yeah. What's going to happen next?
Okay, essentially, where I have difficulty is that.
Part of our revenue.
The bylaw that was passed was to curtail fentanyl.
Right, which I don't see how this helps with that fundamental, it's a money grab.
I do not see how imposing a fee on business could tell fentanyl use on a reserve. I do not see, and I raised that with two counselors, Chief and Counsel, and telling them, I don't understand why they couldn't have a bylaw that's called business bylaw, like business license bylaw, unless fair, all towns have those, rather than to disguise it under a fentanyl crisis. I do not understand the logic, but maybe it's not for me to question. Essentially, I hear, let it slide and forget about it.
Yeah, it, it didn't rest well, that they so quickly, Chief and Counsel could amend that clause in the bylaw, just because we wrote a letter stating, well, what about this clause? Then they said, well, that's gone now.
And, and I get the reaction to that, I mean, I think that's a normal reaction, I just don't think, given our, in blood terms, our reliability on, our dependence upon them being part of the system.
Right.
I mean, that's really dumb to, for us to fight over 350 bucks.
Yeah, I can agree with you.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
That would be my position then, by the way.
Councillor Pivoy, since you are the Chief Mountain Regional, I'm looking at the Statement of Receipt and Disbursement for the year end of December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Maybe you can help me a little bit. I have a few questions for you. And I bet you you have answers and.
I might.
Okay, well, if you don't, you'll find them.
I will. Which line?
Okay, look at line twenty-two. That is a line where there is a huge discrepancy.
I can't answer that one.
Okay, tell me, what happened there?
We had a major, major maintenance costs. One specifically that was about sixty-five thousand dollars, another one that was another twenty. And they just, they hit us in the wrong year. We weren't budgeting for them this year, and they hit us early, so.
Now.
That's specifically what happened in that line.
Okay, so now help me with a good news story on thirty-nine. I remember the idea of spending four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, it was a new truck or a new piece of equipment.
Right.
And we said.
Yeah, well, a part of the huge expense to fix the trucks that you saw in twenty-two prevented the need for buying new trucks because that extended, we got five more years of the trucks.
And the last item I want you to help me with, under forty-five, maintenance building in grounds. Which building got fixed?
Great question. That one I'd probably have to ask them, but I'm wondering if this isn't related to, because when it says grounds, this might be related to a contract. Right, and I don't think there was any building, you know, maintenance that was out of budget. But I took maybe grounds, we had an issue with some, there was a land dispute or something we had to resolve. So, I think they put some legal into there because they had to investigate a contract that had to be renewed.
The reason I'm asking is that we have issue with our building. So, if all the buildings are being fixed, I would mind for us to.
In fact, all, yeah, all repairs have been put on hold until we're switched off into permission.
So, I just ask you, so that's, that is it for my question on this?
I was surprised, actually, in the last meeting, which I was acting in a Chautauqua play when they had it. So, but just it came up, who's gonna clean up the garbage blowing around the transfer stations? And they deferred that to our commission. I thought, why are we deferring that one? You know, so ultimately, anything we defer, just so we know, right? If they're deferring something, it just means that it goes back to the rightful owner of those transfer stations, meaning the individual municipality. So, it's back to our problem until they determine otherwise.
Okay. When I was on that committee, we had bought a bunch of bull fences, whatever.
Yes, so we get more every year.
And then it was up to Lee to do the cleanup. So, all of a sudden, Lee's not doing the cleanup.
Well, no, he does the cleanup out there, and that's still happening. But the cleanup of the transfer stations is in the hands of each municipality.
I see what you're saying.
And he's doing a great job. He gets reminded to do it every time.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so.
Alrights.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's true. I agree that every transfer station in every community should be kind of maintained.
Right, yeah.
Somewhat be a nicer. Alright, so we have Community in Bloom, councillor.
I will share a little bit.
You have a good news story.
Yeah, I do, actually. We shared that one with the Canada One Fifty Committee because that was organized as part of the Canada One Fifty. But we did have a tree planting event last night and it was very successful. You know, initially, I was a little worried that we didn't have it advertised properly, but I underestimated the power of Facebook and social media because we had, we planted one hundred and eighty-plus trees up in the community gardens. And we tried to give recognition to everyone who came and planted them. And I had them sign in on the book, and I actually counted a hundred and forty-three different signatures here, and I don't think everybody signed in the book. We get everybody, we've had them put their name on the stake beside the tree. So, we plant, and in fact, even our C A O and his family were up there and they, they planted trees as well. So, we had good representation from the community. They had Canada One Fifty provided lunch or barbecue and.
We had food. According to burgers, we've had two hundred and fifty independent years, so unless a few stuck in and got two.
And people were telling me, let's do this every year.
Well, we had the Power Committee, so it was a little tough for me to be two places at the same time. But I want to thank you, councillor Pivoy, and all of you who supported that cause and councillor Creed for having led this wonderful project.
Barbecue was amazing, that was awesome. Had those kids running back and forth.
And we even learned how to take the tongue down.
Yeah, we figured that.
That was a little shit. Yeah.
So, it was rather interesting. We were there, all of us.
The mayor was there holding on.
Well, if you help with the zoo, you're there, that's good TV.
You could have had some fairly good interest in shop.
Anyway, if I could just continue a little bit on my reports, I didn't get anything written. Sometimes a challenger, we have our meetings, for instance, our next community little meeting is tomorrow night. And so, the writer report is about a month in a year for the next council meeting. But we do have the Community in Bloom judges coming this year, and their date is July eighteenth. So, if you want to note, July eighteenth is the date for the Community in Bloom judges. I actually have a little profile, a little bio on the two judges that are coming. It's likely to be great, and the mayor is going to provide some breakfast for them. And so, I think.
La Zonia?
Breakfast. We got, how many do you crave?
July eighteenth, huh?
Now, we did call, we wanted.
And we also have another Community in Bloom Canada One Fifty event this week on Thursday, which will be the recognition of the young trees by the Courthouse Museum. There will be an unveiling of the sign and a short program starting at four-thirty on Thursday afternoon. So, I'm hoping that one is advertised.
Yeah, I was hoping to be there, but unfortunately, at five o'clock, I have grad. So, I have to be at the grad.
That's fine, I was planning.
So, councillor, if the mayor is able to do that for me, thank you.
You're speaking, and the councillor represented the committee, so.
Yeah, so.
Representing the mayor.
I was asked to do it, but I can't do two things at the same time.
So, I think it's going to be a great event, and also the art competition.
D grad.
D grad.
D grad.
The high school graduation.
Where we had that.
Nope, they have the.
They have the dance, the frogs.
Two different events now.
Okay, alright, thank you so much for that.
Also, an art, I guess, there was a competition, and they will be displayed at the Farmer's Market on the Thursday morning at the Ice Center, the art.
Farmer's Market starts this Thursday.
It starts this Thursday, so they will be on display. And then the recognition here at the Courthouse Museum will be like Thursday at four-thirty.
So, that's very good.
Is Diane also speaking at that?
Yeah, she's getting the program.
It's very good. I mean, Community in Bloom has been extremely active, and thank you very much for all those beautiful baskets on Main Street. And thank you so much to all the planters that you have built with the only bit of love. Thank you so much.
We'll be doing the Art of the Week program as well this year, where we recognize different residences in the community.
I am wondering if, since July eighteenth is the day that our judges will be in town, if we should put something on our social media to encourage people to kind of trend their mind and kind of make it a little bit more.
For that lead person, yeah. Oh, I agree.
A little bit more appealing.
Do we need a motion or?
Give us something that we will just do, we'll try to get that on the town.
Maybe we can put it on a Facebook or whatever.
Call in that on the council that the Thursday.
Take your flowers inside, recognition.
Alright, I think councillor Creed, since you had said, do you want to talk about the ad hoc?
Yes, I think we need to report back to council. I'm sorry I didn't get anything written officially in there. We've just been very busy. But the Police Ad hoc Committee met with Sergeant Semenak regarding Dr. Russell's concern. And so Sergeant Semenak has the transcript of the nine-one-one call, so he was able to. And what the intent, you know, there wasn't any intent. I guess there was a little offense taken there, the questions that were asked. But you have to consider that they're not LDS oriented. They had, these are standard questions that they ask everybody. And the intent of the caller of the nine-one-one reception was to keep the person on the line until the police arrived at the scene. And there was a little confusion because the girl had, you know, reasonably called, you know, texted her friend and told her not to come alone. And so, there was other boys involved. And so, when the police got there, their initial response was to try to catch, you know, some of these offenders. And so, there was a perceived delay there. So, a little bit of, I guess in any incident, there's always a perception on both parts, a little miscommunication. But initially, when we met with Sergeant Semenak, he'd been on vacation. He wasn't aware that the girl had made, you know, had made a statement. And I was not comfortable with that, so I asked, did we actually find out? And the answer was, yes, she did. She did go into the detachment and make a formal statement. So, that was taken care of. So, and that's where we left it. I didn't inquire into the nature of the statements, really not our business to do that. But it was, it was made and investigated. And also Sergeant Semenak made a commitment that the police will increase their presence or surveillance in that locality. So, that's where we're at.
And no word on convictions or anything?
They weren't able to basically identify or catch, like I say, because of the intervention of other people that were there at the same time, and everybody scattered.
The only things that were said is that in another incident, a person was arrested, and they are high and convicted, and they have a high suspicion that that individual was at the scene. So, they were quite confident that this one was rolling around.
Three people.
Right, okay. So, thank you so much for that report, councillor. We have Mormon Trail, councillor Van Gundy.
Yeah, I don't have a formal report on that, but I'd like to point out that the Mormon Trail through South Grove got a collaboration award. And there I was, I'll tell you straight out, I was very disappointed in the fact that you had a committee representative on Mormon Trail that did not get a formal invitation to that banquet.
But you know something, remember, I told you you could come.
That's fine, but you took somebody who was not even employed by the town at that time of Chautauqua. And I'm thinking that you had two councillors and a councillor's wife who put in tremendous amount hours. Councillor Pivoy and his wife Kim and myself, we put in tremendous amount hours to have a successful Chautauqua law. And I think we did. And I'd like to recommend that when we have, when we have award banquets or any kind of thing that deals with any committee that we as councillors serve on, that councillor needs to be directly attendance to that committee. Or if there's any kind of an education situation that comes up that that councillor is concerned with on a committee, that they need to be made aware that they can attend those education seminars. Now, last council meeting, and I'll do this for an example, there came up something with Parks and Recreation. It has been the, how should I call it? The usual, the norm, that we send a Parks and Recreation foreman, Mr. Russell, to this, these kind of things. Maybe we need to look at the councillor that's involved in that to give him some education in Parks and Recreation so that he can do his job on that committee representing this council a lot more favorable. And that's councillor Barnes. So, we need to look at all of these kind of things, why we're attending these committees, what our responsibilities are to these committees, what our responsibility is back to the community, to the council. And how can we further our self-skills in representing the council on these committees? Old Man River, that's a big committee, you know, and there's a lot of things that you need to learn on these committees. Mormon Trail, I'm pleased to have the collaboration award with the other communities.
Councillor, can I just say something?
Yes.
I did not even know it was awarded.
Well, I.
And when I said, when I was asked, are you coming to that? I said, yes, as a South Grove, I will be there to the H E M. But then I said, aren't you having anybody else? And if you remember in our last package, the invitation was there for four people up on town.
Yeah.
And.
Well, I just, I just picked it up.
You did not know, you did not know either. Right, you did not know either, and they had not told me that we had one year award. It was news to me. So, I felt really, really odd. And when they told me through the email that we had one left, I sent an email to Jeff and said, Jeff, are we sending somebody else to represent Mormon Trail? And Jeff said, well, we should have Alex represent that because he's the administrator there. And then when he wrote to me, I said, of course, I would be totally supportive of that. And I told you that, but you chose not to come.
Well, I think it was after the fact because I had other things planned then. But I just, I just, I think.
But I miss your, I miss your thinking.
Description board of our involvement in these committees. The Airport Committee to make a report on that, I think that it tells itself in the letter from the sponsor.
And you guys did a very good job, thank you.
And Schluck Foundation, they wrote back with a letter on the requisition, so how that stands.
So, thank you, but I do not disagree with your position that we should be representative of committee at whatever event. I support that position, and I didn't intend to offend you.
And apologies accepted. I just, I think that we need to have more of an outline as councillor, assignments to these committees, and what's expected of us, what's gonna happen in a case like that situation, you know, who should be attending and so forth.
Like I say, I found myself, I'm really odd. Thinking at the last minute, I'm told, well, you don't have enough representation. Well, what's the issue? I said, well, you want, you want a reward. Oh, last minute.
Here's the comment, there's been times when these conferences come up and, you know, like I'm saying, with the Parks and Recreation and those things, I've often felt that, you know, that I should be attending them, but it's always been kind of a monetary thing that you can't afford to go. And I think the principle is that the representative for whatever, Act Dev or whatever, when those conferences are out there, some get to go, some don't get to go, right? And I've had councils from other communities say, well, aren't you on that? And I've had councillors from other communities say, well, aren't you on that? Jeez, we were there. How come you weren't there, you know? What do I say, you know?
Yeah, but just.
And so what do you want to say?
I've attended the NACDAV conference.
Yeah, you have, yes.
And it's come out of my, our regular education stuff. That's why I've used my education dollars for it. I think all of us have that ability to do that if we choose to use our education dollars for it. I don't think money should be the issue. It's there.
Well, and I think there's, there's a, there's an interesting line between, you know, excessive participation and effective participation.
Sure.
Right? And I think, for instance, when I was on senior housing, sorry, Shinnuck Foundation. When I served on Shinnuck Foundation, there were several regional and even provincial committees and boards that could have used help in service. But ultimately, the expense would have fallen to our municipality. And to what gain for our municipality would my service on those committees have been? Certainly for my education, that would have been good. But there was no guarantee I would continue on that. You know, some of the councillors in some of those regional committees, they've served in their senior housing for 15, 20 years. And, you know, meanwhile, our rotation is more like two or three on a, you know, a good cycle. And so, but, you know, it is possible that somebody could really benefit this southern region by getting a little deeper involved in some of that policy, the provincial level policy in the senior housing committees.
Yeah.
So that's one where we might want to look at, hey, maybe we, you know, in the next election, after the next election, let's get somebody in there for kind of a long term, at least four years. Let's invest in them and let's get some, you know, benefit to this area.
That's an interesting, that's an interesting point. That is the position of the county, for example. They are long term. But then you have some councillors that midterm say, you know, I had it with this committee, it's time for me to change.
Well, that's why we have an organizational every couple of years.
So.
Mayor, with this in mind, I want to publicly thank councillor P. Wade for the job and the work that he's put in in Canada Day, the celebration party of the park. Because it looks like it's coming up to be a big event. And there's been a lot of work.
Let us enjoy it and then we'll give him all the kudos.
Make sure it's good for his.
That's right, that's right. I'll fill out a bill, so give me all I can get and I'll film.
Thank you. But I really want to thank you all also with the Chautauqua. That is a big job. And I know that Alex has been there to create the transition for the next council and make sure that we understand what we have to next year. So, but thank you so much for all you did.
Next year's for your, for some information. McGrath will be hosting, McGrath and Carson will be hosting the Chautauqua. McGrath will be hosting the larger part of Chautauqua.
And so we'll have the pleasure?
Yes, I think we'll have the pleasure.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, it's, it's good. I think, I think it's a wonderful initiative for the southern part of Alberta is really up to celebrate our culture. All right, we need a report from CES.
So just really one comment that I wanted to make. Our last emergency services meeting, there was considerable discussion put forward regarding capital costs. We have trucks that are nearing replacement. And so there's always concern that maybe communities aren't putting money away as we've been permitted to do and budgeting to do. I don't think that's an issue. But one of the suggestions that was made there was that the authority borrowed the money to go and purchase those. I pointed out that authorities can't borrow money. So the workaround proposal to that that came was we should look at leasing trucks, which I'm not sure that, again, the authority can do that. But one of the communities could do that on behalf of the authority.
Are we the managing?
No, we're the county.
Oh, okay.
And it's the county that's pushing that direction.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm bringing that up so that you're aware of where the discussion is. I've opposed it. I don't know, we're a couple of voices. We'll carry the majority on it.
Who are the time breakers?
Well, you have two villages and you have, you have two.
Two from the county.
Yeah, two councillors. Two councillors from county, two councillors from there.
Right, so in other words, we're constantly in a minority of all the four voices represented country.
There's another problem there is often the fire meeting is the same night as Orsk.
Right.
I'm in Orsk.
And so a point of office.
So we got, we're minus one voice. And so this next organizational meeting, when we have the new council, we're going to have to be sure that, that those quarterly meetings aren't, that you don't have the same councillor going to the quarterly meetings.
I think more than that, even specifically with CES, we need to sit down and really look at, urge emergency services from a town's perspective.
Yeah.
Are involved. Don't misunderstand me. I don't think that we're better off to go create our own fire department. That's not what I'm advocating for by any stretch. But I do think that we need to, as a council, I think council needs to have a better understanding of how that community, that authority works and what its limitations are and where some of the issues are that need to be addressed. Because there are some pretty significant issues there. So that's all I have wanted to say.
Councillor Mars, I see if I can ask a question.
You can ask whatever you want.
Have we decommissioned that 40-year-old midship? And is it going to Mexico?
There has been nothing specifically said of anything going to Mexico at this point. Doesn't mean it won't be. It has not been.
All stripped off or anything like that?
Yeah, so I don't know the answer.
The old yellows.
Okay, well, anyways, that's a question for the future.
Yeah, just a question for councillor Mars. If they purchase, you know, if the municipalities are all setting aside funds, you know, for this and they're holding it and the authority, you know, these buy, you know, a new unit, do they then just requisition that amount from?
That's the way we set it up once we start. This, it's only been the last two years that we've started having the individual municipalities put money away. So yes, that's effectively how it would run. What you have to recognize is we've been doing it now for two years. We're putting $40,000 away. So we've got $80,000 each municipality. We have two trucks that are coming up due for replacement, but 400 grand apiece. And this isn't, there's not enough money to replace them.
When you narrated that would happen, the main thing is I'm a little concerned also about the depreciation kind of right here. Because for the amount of work that those trucks do, couldn't that have a longer life?
Yeah, that's a thought we brought up. We've, we've discussed that numerous times.
Should we?
There's another side of it where you look at it, the majority of the wear and tear on those machines takes place in the county, not in town, but that's a whole other issue.
That's another.
Now, further to my question, councillor Mars. If you're decommissioning the midship, could that midship go to Glenmore or Hillsbury?
No.
Now, I know that there is legislation in place that you have to look very seriously at the age of a fire truck.
It's not even that issue. It's they don't have the staffing and the volunteers out there that they could even use it. We've done that on a couple of other trucks.
Like the mayor suggested, even the depreciation. I think there's legislation that you have to really seriously prove that that truck can be utilized after so many years.
Yeah, there's, there's some testing and stuff that goes through at that point. 25 years is kind of, we've stretched it out because 20 years is where it's supposed to be replaced at. We've stretched it out to 25. Personally, I don't think the majority of the trucks are in that bad a shape that they couldn't go probably another five. But we did see on one of the trucks where, you know, a seal went out on it and it was what, $40,000 to fix it? So, yeah, so that started getting to fixing.
Keep us posted. Thank you for your reports, councillors. Much appreciated. Okay.
I think I made a comment on Mars meeting if I could.
Go ahead.
And I made the comment in here that I didn't agree with the discussion on the tiny house presentation.
I saw that, yeah.
Okay, just, it was so biased. I was offended. And I told him so. I put my hand up to the presentation and said, hey, what's going on here? Are you trying to tell me that you don't want any community to have them? Because that's where the, that's where the slide presentation that he brought up was. And I was offended by it. I told him, I said, there are people out there that that's what they can afford. Not only that, that's maybe what they want. It's a trend, yeah. And that's what they were bringing up, that trends don't necessarily translate into something that you really want in your community, right? But when you have rural communities with people that don't have as much money and some of the seniors want these and they're building communities all over around these little things and they're nice, some of them are really nice. And he was trying to say that there's lots of people getting out of them and everything. I haven't seen that. I've read lots of reports on tiny homes. And so I told him and he kind of backtracked on it and, well, I know I don't understand that. Everybody, every community is involved, but I just want to write the saying that I think there is a need in this day and age when it comes to expensive homes, that there are people that would benefit greatly from these if we ever come to that point in our own community, designating an area in our town for homes like this. They're, they're a neat little place.
I mean, that's a one that are about 450 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. Some of the water even that.
I was just going to ask administration, right now, currently, in our, in our land use bylaw, we do not allow, like, right now, there's no provision for someone to plonk down a tiny home.
I would have to look. I think it would fall under a modular home, under the width requirement. It would fall smaller than the required width, yeah.
And, you know, I don't know, we haven't had anyone asking, although I know we have one community member who won one from the Land Reserve project. And they just, and they ended up selling it somewhere else, so it didn't end up here. But at first, they talked to Norman about getting it here, putting it here, what would that look like? And it didn't look very promising for them, which is why ultimately that money, they ended up selling it and getting it moved on.
But I think it's something that we need to look into down the road.
Well, they're manufacturing them right there, you know? 15 clicks away, they're manufacturing tiny homes that we don't have currently a bylaw to allow in this.
I think it's something that we need to get out there and discuss.
Yeah.
There was one in Waterton last year.
There was one, there's one of them right now on Fifth Avenue North. Working that value on your way out of the same drive.
Probably.
So you run right downtown in between two buildings. It's all big white and beautiful.
Anyways, let's just discuss for another day. Thank you very much. We have a pleasant recognition to do. Maybe Jeff wants to come.
Maybe.
Yeah.
You got your camera.
It's always a pleasure to recognize those who succeed in completing new education program. And Jeff completed his certificate in municipal management and leadership from the University of Alberta School Business Executive Education Program. And that was something that was part of a project that we supported as a council. And we are very pleased to see him completed. So well done and congratulations.
Jeff, could you and the mayor go over in front of the flag?
Sure.
Is there anywhere you need to report?
Yeah, we can hold it up.
You've almost surpassed your mentor Marion, haven't you?
She took it with me.
Oh, they took it with her.
She just keep it up with her. They evacuated together.
This is a one Marion tried to do for many years.
Right, that's great.
Don't get Bill's head in there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So it was a lot of work. And many all the way from the families. So well done.
Thanks.
All right, so Nancy, you have a piece of the report. Any questions right now in this report?
Not specifically on that report, but just one question. Do we have a bylaw that specifically addresses the taking down of trees? Tree removal.
Not that I'm aware of. I didn't think so.
Okay. I'll.
There's more story there.
There is more story. It doesn't need to be brought up here, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
I thought we, I thought we had some about trees.
Yeah, in some community, you remove a tree, you have to plan to do.
We have that if the municipality removes it.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about private tree, a private.
Private tree and private.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so maybe you want to discuss that.
Damn, it's a little child.
No, not definitely that.
90 to 2017 project report, that is a large infrastructure. As you will see, there is some other projects that are not specifically listed there as the dust control on Second, Second Street East that will be done this summer sometime or in the fall. I don't know when exactly. It's not listed, but it will be done. Okay?
Avenue is coming along real good, Jeff.
They're just getting into it. We have to block up now, I think.
Anyways, at this point, I have a request to take a break for a few minutes. So we will entertain a motion.
I'll move to recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Is it five now? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Seven eleven.
All in favor?
I thought seven eleven, I'm hungry.
All right, councillor.